Good morning. I called to order the special meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board for August the 11th, 2022. If you will, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to say that we do have a quorum. Tim Pittman is on the way, and Anita should be here as well, but we will go ahead and get started. As I said before, this is a special meeting. Purpose is to kick off our UDO audit. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Wes McLeod. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Good to see everybody again. I'll just say my name is Wes McLeod, Local Government Services Director, Cape Fear Council of Governments. I think that we all know each other, although it's been a while. Luckily, you guys have had Matt now come onboard and take the helm, and you guys are, obviously, I hope that you know, in very good hands. Nevertheless, I'm here to kick off the Development Code Audit today. Really, we're just going to talk about what the code audit will be, procedural kind of items, the planning board's role in this process, and then to kind of close out the meeting, or to have a sort of significant portion of this meeting, just to have some initial feedback and dialogue with you all about things you feel like are going well from a land use and growth management standpoint, and perhaps some things you feel like are not going so well. And then to close the meeting, I will give you all the first part of the Development Code Audit for you all to review between now and when we meet next. So before I jump in, any initial questions? Okay. All right. So I think it is important to just frame this a little bit. I think everybody knows what a Unified Development Ordinance is, but let's just talk a little bit about exactly what it is, and so we're all starting from the same understanding. So the UDO is really what Matt, the planning board, and the town council are using to administer and enforce all of the land development regulations in town. The interesting thing in Oak Island, as in some other jurisdictions, however, is there's some pieces of land development regulations that are scattered about in your general code as well. So part of the code audit will be to identify some of those general code items that perhaps are more suited for being located in the Unified Development Ordinance. But typically, that's the goal of the UDO, to pull in all those relevant pieces so you're all in one document. Typically, a UDO, it will include an overarching administration section that identifies all the permit and approval procedures. In your current UDO, your approval procedures are kind of littered throughout. They're not all, you know, one after the other. So as you'll see as part of the audit, we'll have some discussion about, from an organizational standpoint, perhaps what's a better way to go about your administration section. This helps not only the UDO administrator, but it helps a citizen, a builder, town council, planning board. They can go right to this section and say, hey, these are all of our approval types. These are how our subdivisions get approved. These are how our site plans get approved. This is how zoning permits get approved, all sort of in one overarching section. Administration section also outlines the relevant bodies that exist in town. Again, all of this is related to land development. Your Unified Development Ordinance, as others, also identify an administrator for oversight of all matters related to land development and enforcement. Depending on the local jurisdiction, it may include specific other department staff for administration of certain topics such as stormwater. So, for example, in the town's general code, in your vegetation code, you identify a town forester, for example. So depending on how that may evolve over time, that responsibility of that forester may lie with the UDO administrator or a forester identified as part of a portion within the UDO. It's really up to the town on how that's necessarily handled. I don't know if there's any other folks you want to mention that have some authority in terms of stormwater or anything like that?
Just like Wes said, there's a stormwater administrator, town forester, all of them, Steve Edwards, he's our chief building official. They certainly have some development regulatory responsibilities as a part of their duties as well.
Yes. And the other key piece of the UDO administrator, for all zoning-related matters, subdivision-related matters, the UDO administrator is the individual that's in charge of making official determinations and interpretations, so that if someone has a question about something, the buck sort of stops with the UDO administrator on what that official decision may be, where there's a gray area or so forth. Okay. Any questions about, this is just very brief, about, you know, the structure of the UDO and what it is. And then the two primary pieces that are in this UDO are your zoning ordinance and your subdivision ordinance. They're not necessarily called that, but this is your zoning regulations and your subdivision regulations that are in this document. I think that you all probably know the difference between these two, but some folks don't. Zoning regulates uses for a particular piece of land. You guys obviously have zoning districts within the town of Oak Island where some things are permitted and other things are not. And there's a table of uses that are tied to that, where it says you can have single-family residential homes in this area, or you can have retail, et cetera, in this area. That's the gist of zoning at its most basic. Your zoning ordinance also obviously outlines development approval processes, and then there may be development standards or supplemental regulations for specific uses. For example, if someone is doing a type of storage use, you may have to have additional buffering or screening or whatever it may be. Or there's a particular use that has to have a certain number of off-street parking spaces tied to it. That's all comes out of your zoning authority, your zoning-related regulations. And then another item of mention, of course, is specific uses which may require quasi-judicial procedure. And that would be, for example, where you have a special use that in here, in the town of Oak Island, would be approved by the town council. The other item that's a component of your UDO is the subdivision ordinance. And I think that, again, most folks understand this, but it can be a little bit confusing. Subdivision is where you get into the division of land, where someone has a 10-acre tract and they want to divide it up and put homes. So there's a subdivision process for that to occur. Once the subdivision process is over, the zoning process comes into place. So you subdivide the land into 30 lots, you allocate a certain amount of infrastructure, roads, streets, water, sewer, and again, that as part of your subdivision regulations, you're identifying that required infrastructure. And that process can be quite complicated. That is much more complicated than just saying, okay, out here on this half-acre lot that's already platted, we want to put a commercial site, a commercial building. That's fairly simple. Understanding all the implications for a subdivision is a much more complicated process. It involves a preliminary plat and a final plat, and lots of other things that come into play, stormwater, et cetera. Once those 30 lots are platted and recorded, then the zoning comes into play that says, all right, on those 30 lots, we're allowed to put a single-family homes or duplexes, et cetera. I just wanted to provide this very brief overview to help just understand a little bit about the framework of these two items. Before unified development ordinances were popular, you had a zoning article and a subdivision article, and a building article, and a stormwater article, and a vegetation article or a chapter. Unified Development Ordinance tries to meld all those together and make them make sense all under the framework of one document. Anything else you want to add about that? Okay. Okay. Questions about those two? And we'll get to sort of the audit process here, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of a basic understanding of the Unified Development Ordinance.
This may be, because I understand, and this is a great overview, this may be getting in the weeds a little bit too much, but at some point, how do you see a PUD, a Plan Unit Development, fitting into the zoning or the subdivision and the different ways that that can happen? Can you just briefly sort of speak, because I know we've had a couple of different things with that?
Sure, and that's a great question. And I know that you guys have an interesting PUD approval process, or one that perhaps needs a little assistance.
Yeah, and that's the zoning, but then we had before that wasn't a zoning, it was just a different types of PUDs in different districts. So there's two different animals there, really.
That's correct. So with a PUD, you take a tract that maybe is zoned R20, you would apply to the town to rezone that to a PUD. If it's in a residential area, obviously, on the tail end of that, your subdivision ordinance is going to come into play. And I'm not sure, Madam Chair, if this is sort of what you're asking, but it is a zoning-related action first to establish the uses and entitlements based on zoning for a PUD, and then, and this is if it's in a residential area, and then, once you've established the zoning and the entitlements for that PUD, then your subdivision comes into play. So your PUD says that you're allowed to do, you're allowed to have single-family residential units at a certain density and a certain lot size. Once that's established, approved, then the developer would come in with a preliminary subdivision plat that meets those requirements of the PUD. The land is then all subdivided. Then we go back again to zoning, where they folks come in for zoning and building permits to actually build those homes, once all the required infrastructure is in and the subdivision plat has been recorded. So it's really a three-step process. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, I mean, that's a good general overview. Typically, as you mentioned, when you establish that PUD, that's when you set up kind of a conceptual master plan, a lot of times, is what'll come along with that, establishing where uses are going to go, what standards apply to it, but then, as that gets developed, then you can go through, like you said, if you have to subdivide those lots, you can go through the subdivision ordinance. If you're going to develop commercially or establish anything else, you work through the processes and the zoning ordinance. That's right.
And obviously, you guys, and recently, have had a fairly large PUD that has been reaproved, that is, will have all aspects of both subdivision and commercial-type development, non-residential development, varying in intensities and uses, and that's certainly the Williamson tract. And I don't know if that was part of that question, or if that question answered, or that answered your question.
Well, part of it, and Williamson's a good example, there were others. But in our previous code, the PUD did not rezone anything. It was, there were certain, there was, I think, three different kinds that were allowed in certain zoning districts. And the zoning district basically determined the density for the PUD. And then you still, you got the PUD and the master plan, then you came back and did the subdivision. So it was, there wasn't any zoning, per se, to it in terms of some of the things that might, you know, it's just a different animal. And I wonder if there's, you know, what are the pros and cons in doing it one way or the other?
Got you. And I think, in the past, those are special use approvals to try to get that PUD in place. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so depending on exactly how that occurs, if it results in a rezoning, then we're not really allowed to do that anymore, because that's akin to a conditional use district or a special use district. If you have a PUD that's established by a master plan per special use, you know, I think you can still do that. But the better tool for that is conditional zoning. And you guys do have that as part of your toolbox now. I think that as part of the audit, you know, we'll likely identify and talk a little bit about your PUD process, and perhaps no longer having that, because conditional zoning more or less accomplishes the same thing, and it's very clear from a statutory authority how we can do conditional zoning, and that we're certainly allowed to do, use this procedure.
And that's kind of where I was going with this, is that we had the PUD, in the UDO now, we had a slightly different PUD animal in our old code, but to eliminate both of them and go to solely the conditional zoning for what those things try to accomplish in both places is really where we need to head in this audit.
Yes, ma'am, and I would agree. You know, your PUD process now is sort of akin to conditional zoning. It's not called that. You're still rezoning. It's still a legislative decision, and you're approving it based on a master development plan or conceptual plan. But there are certain things that are not necessarily clear about it.
That would be an understatement, but thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Great question. All right. So let's just talk about the process, you know, about the Development Code Audit process. Part of this will be identification of potential problems, improvements, and inconsistencies in the UDO and general code. We will provide a detailed review of all these different items, the administration approval procedures, definitions, permitted uses, zoning map, et cetera. And then, of course, there will be a presentation and a written audit of findings. As I alluded to earlier, you'll receive the first part of your audit today, which goes, I believe, the general code all the way through Article 6 for you to review between now and then. I think an important part of this will be, depending on how much time you all spend reviewing this, there may be things that you notice in the UDO or the general code that you have questions about or you feel aren't clear that we haven't identified. And that's the purpose of this. You guys are the advisory board in this. Or there may be things that I identify that you say, well, Wes, I don't think that that's a problem. Why have you identified that? I think you're wrong. And that's perfectly okay. A lot of this is about discussion about the procedures and the policies that exist today, and understanding what's the best course of action if we're going to change those in the future. Then we're all on the same framework for initiating those changes. Now, we could do it another way. Wes could just come in here and start telling you, you need to change X, Y, Z, but that may not be very productive. This way, we all understand, we build some consensus on the things that are problematic and do warrant change. So in terms of the planning board's role, and I think you guys are sort of, discussed this a little bit, but you guys are serving as advisory body for this audit process. I'll add that there is going to be, we're going to meet with another advisory, another few advisory committees or an ad hoc committee of sorts, depending on, in my discussion with Matt, outside of this as well, but you guys are the primary advisory body for this process. Of course, as you do in any meeting, obviously participate and provide feedback, attend the meetings, and review the draft material, and then think about this in terms of advising the process based on kind of the citizen desires or those long-range goals that are outlined in the town's comp plan. And another thing is to try to think about this in terms of long-term goals and big-picture policy. Obviously, get as much into the details as you want, but what you guys can convey to us is, these are the ideas that we have. Staff can then take those ideas and put them into the ordinance and create the actual language. You don't need to think about trying to craft the actual ordinance language. You just need to think about what it is that's important to you, that needs to be addressed as part of the UDO. Does that make sense? Okay. Questions about planning board's role? All right. So schedule, I did want to mention schedule. We're going to try to meet, depending on folks' schedule, on the second Thursday for the next few months. So the next meeting that we would have is September 8th. And this is not set in stone, but I did want to at least mention it while we're all here together, to see if that is, if that's not good for Lisa.
Well, the league is holding a training in Leland that we've already have
That you already have.
A couple of us signed up for.
Well, there you go.
I can check the, I'll check the time while you're talking.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But yes, we would typically try to meet, and we may need to alter that. And yes, I should have checked with the schedule queen before I mentioned September 8th.
Is there, let me ask you this too, because is there another day of the week that is potentially has some openings during the month for you?
Wednesdays, the second Wednesday is usually, I'm also available in the mornings. I don't know if that's okay with Matt?
Have anything?
Okay.
Wes, how long are these meetings planned to be?
Typically, two hours, two and a half hours. I mean, once you go more than two hours on a topic like this, you kind of, you are reaching diminishing returns.
On the 8th, the training is from 8 until 12, so the afternoon would work.
Okay.
Yeah, 2:00 or something, but.
Yes. Perhaps I've got a conflict that afternoon, but I don't know if folks are amenable to Wednesday. Is the, are the chambers available on Wednesday morning, the 2nd?
On the 7th?
Let me check. Yes.
Okay. Is the board comfortable with the 2nd Wednesday, so that would also move into October? The 2nd Wednesday in October would be the 12th. We can, unless there's a conflict, we can tentatively set, we'll set October 12th, and then we'll see where we are from that meeting to move forward.
And the 7th of October, September.
Yes, sir. September 7th and October 12th.
And that'd be the same, 10 to 12?
Yes, ma'am.
September 7th?
Mm-hmm. Good.
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
September 7th, October 12th.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And our regular meetings would be the following week on the Thursday, regular time.
Oh, that didn't work correctly.
There you go.
Yeah, that didn't align correctly. There we go. Okay. So I did want to just, I won't, you all can read this, and I'll just point out a couple items, and I wanted to just provide this to you, just as a refresher for folks about the things that were identified in the vision statement. You have items in there, obviously, about preserving and protecting the natural environment, the beaches, the dunes. There's some specifics about the unique scale and character of the town. There are specifics about, which I think is unique to beach towns in particular, identifying a place that you can live and work. A lot of our beach towns, that's not necessarily something that comes into play. It is primarily a place for play, or vacation, if you will. You also identify multimodal transportation as something that's important as well, and then, which is common among our beach towns. And then the other item that's perhaps a little bit different from some of our other beach communities is the recognition of economic development as something that's important to the town. So you guys are undoubtedly unique in the fact, in your size, in the fact that you do have folks living and working here, whereas your neighbors, that's not so much, perhaps may not be so much the case. So just wanted to provide that for everybody to think about as you go through this process. Now, that's not to say that, you know, this vision statement was put together probably almost 10 years ago now. Is that correct, Lisa?
2015, I think, yeah.
16.
Yeah.
About 2016.
Okay, 2016. Okay. So when the Landy's Plan is updated again, you know, this may not be exactly what comes into play, but this was what was adopted at the time. And this goes back into thinking about those big-picture goals that I mentioned when we're talking about the code audit. Okay. So that's enough of me talking, really. Now, the goal is to hear from you all on your feedback. We're going to have time to go through the audit when, you know, when we meet next, section by section, but this is more of an overall discussion with you all about growth and development in the town. And so I'll just start off, and I'll sort of turn it over perhaps to Madam Chair to start. Let's talk, this is usually the more difficult item to identify, the things that we're actually doing well. We'll get to the things that we're not doing well in a moment, but, you know, I'd like to talk, you know, about some things, if any, you guys feel that are going well in the town from a development-related standpoint. Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Wes. I'm just going to start on this end and just go around, if that's all right with you.
I'd like to first ask some questions about the audit process before we get into discussing it.
Sure.
Okay.
If that's amenable.
So back up just a second.
Sure.
Wes, it all sounds good, and thank you. What I'd like to do is sort of ask about a couple of things. How is this audit bounded? In other words, if, I've worked with consultants for many years, and we can waste your time, or you could waste our time. So how do we stay on track and get the most out of your organization and your staff?
So, and I think that's a great question, and perhaps So, and I think that's a great question, and perhaps, you know, I should have called that in play. We're only identifying things here as part of this process that perhaps need to be changed, or consideration for change, or recommendations. We're not actually changing anything, so I did want to point that out. But yes, so that we can be efficient, I think, again, gets back to thinking about this, to what degree you can from a big-picture standpoint. There will be very detailed items that we get into, but we don't need to go down the weed, go down into the weeds on very specific items. You'll uncover those weeds when you go to draft the ordinance itself, right? You know, whether it's, and you're going to have a discussion about exceptions to setback rule, you know, whether it should be three and a half feet, or 3.75 feet, or whatever it may be. The point is that you want to have a setback exception for certain items, rather than trying to figure out exactly what that is. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, but I guess what I don't want to do, maybe I'll ask like two or three questions at the same time. What's the acceptance criteria for this contract? I asked for a copy of the contract last week, and I, there is really no acceptance criteria. I'm trying to, trying to understand what's done, in terms, what's the definition of done? When, when, when do we stop? How long does this go for?
Sure. So, the goal is that we'll have four meetings with you all, and then we'll have another three meetings with an advisory committee, or compilation of advisory committee and board members. Do we, do we know, okay. That's yet to be determined, but that's part of the contract. And the audit will go through the entire UDO and then the applicable general code items. So, you'll, again, as I mentioned earlier, you'll get your first phase of this. And our goal will be to get through this in four meetings, you know. There may be, and it may be less than four meetings, I could be, you know, mistaken about that most likely, but we want to make sure that we address the things that are important to be addressed about the UDO, and so that it sets the stage for a potential update of those key items. And those key items to close the, close out the audit process will be prioritized. It's not going to be everything that's been recommended, but there'll be, I don't know how many, it just depends, 10, 15 items that we may say, hey, if you guys are going to go and amend the code, these are the things that you need to do first.
Okay, so, you're going around, I guess, I do want to ask about that. So, now you jumped into sort of the output of the document. So, in the end, we'll get the audit results, you put it up there, findings. So, could you describe what that will be? You just sort of jumped in, is it going to be 10 or 15 items?
Every section of the code, every section of the UDO, well, you know, section 1.10, it will, there's a table, say 1.10, and then on the right side of the table, no change recommended, or this section conflicts with this, or this section's confusing, or you've got this section that says that, for example, that garages are allowed up to the front, to the same setbacks as a primary. In most jurisdictions, the rule is that the garage cannot go forward of the, and so, every section of your UDO, and that's what, where it goes back to, there may be things that you all identify that I don't identify, or things that we identify that you disagree with.
Okay, if I could, and I'm not trying to be rude, but I don't want to take up all the time. So, if you could, I mean, maybe I'll just jump to what I would like to see, and maybe you'll tell me, oh, it's already in there. So, I'd like the results to be, the findings to be prioritized. So, when you say, you know, this is a bigger item, or much more important, or could have much more impact, then lower items, lower items may be, this is a little bit of a housekeeping issue, and it can be fixed later. So, if we could get prioritized results based on your expertise. The other, the other thing I would like to understand is, what's the criteria? And you already jumped into that, and so, I'll summarize by saying, I think some of the audit criteria is going to be, there's a conflict in the ordinance. In other words, it says six feet over here, and over here it says seven feet, there's a conflict. I call that a conflict. And then there's housekeeping. I would call, housekeeping would be, you have fences described in 14 places, why don't you consolidate them into-
Yes.
So, that's housekeeping. Then I would say land use conflict, land use plan conflict. In other words, this particular item is not consistent with your land use plan vision. Will you be calling those out? Is that an auditable item?
So, and Matt, was that memo provided to them that I sent to you? Okay, okay. So, there's a memo that you all should have also gotten. So, the majority of the things that I will identify are, that we'll identify are administration, housekeeping, conflicting provisions. Where there's things that we feel like perhaps a policy needs to be thought through a little bit more, we may identify those. But I'm not the policymaker. So, that will set the stage for you all discussing the policy on, well, what's the policy on our height? We're not going to change our height requirements, but this would be a policy question, right? Wes is not going to say, I think you should change your height requirements in town. That's a policy position. If the board says we should think, you think we should change a policy of our height requirement, then we would have that discussion, and it would be included as part of the audit. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And if I, I'd like to ask, obviously, I'm only a member of this board, but I would like to ask that you prioritize the items, and you also categorize them. So, you could categorize them by housekeeping, conflict, and any policy items.
They will be prioritized towards the end. You will see whether or not they're categorized as part of the recommendation.
It'd be nice to see at the end.
I agree. We have a certain fee that we have agreed upon, and there's only so much that we can do. Now, we can be here, and we can triple the fee, and we can do all of that, but there's only so much that we can do. I'll just say that you're going to get the first piece of this, and so, between now and then, you'll have some time to take a look at exactly what the deliverable is. And this is not something that you guys are the first folks that we've ever done this for. We've done this in quite a number of communities, so. And it is not a, I'll just add that, look, anytime the town spends money on something, it's important, but the town is not spending a lot of money on this.
Right, I agree. I remember asking you when you were here, how much does this cost? And I was surprised at the cost, and so, you can only get so much for the fee that you pay.
But it will be a valuable service, I can assure you.
I'm looking forward to it. I've been waiting for it, and anxious about it. One last question, Madam Chair, which is, what is the purpose of this advisory committee that's sort of a little mystery around?
The goal is to seek some feedback from some additional groups on things that they may feel like are important. You know, you guys are the folks that deal with this all day long, and so, that's why you're identified as the, as a primary advisory role. But this would offer some opportunities for some other groups to just share their feedback, mainly about these big-picture topics that they feel like are either not being addressed, or things that are happening that are going well.
And since you've done this before, what types of people are we talking about? It sounds mysterious.
Well, it is still being, we're still trying to finalize exactly as, if we're going to go meet with three already-established committees, or if it's, or if there'll be a separate committee that's composed of, you know, I'm not sure, it's-
What have you done in other towns?
In other towns, it's typically, we just work with the planning board on this.
Okay.
There's been other towns that, you know, for UDO processes, it's an ad hoc committee that's composed of a couple of planning board members, a couple of council members, and a couple of citizens at large. But Matt and I, and Lisa, and David are, you know, trying to sort that out, and it will take place, it's just, it's not set in stone at the moment. Is that fair? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you, Bob. Those are good, good questions. So, now we're back to, Wes, you want to hear from us about what things in the regarding growth and development that we think are going well?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, as I started, I started to say, I just want to go from one end to the other and get people's reaction to that. So, Tim, that means on this round, we're starting with you.
Well, things are going well. My first rodeo was this, so.
I mean, you know, think about growth and development of the town. What's, what do you think's going on?
I think it's, and I'm not sure about this, but I know that the town has kind of gotten into the paving aspect of those wonderful laterals that were on the roads. I mean, that's a good thing that the town has moved forward on that. I don't know if the, it's economic development, I guess, does that include what we do for the community as a town with the-
Just growth and development?
With the events that we have back here in the field, with the concerts, the farmer's market seems to be a really big thing that's growing. One thing that I would recommend when you're talking about the concerts back there is pouring a concrete pad out there to dance on. That would be huge. There's other places. I think I sent Sheila the pictures of the Sunset, no, the Cal, yeah, Sunset Beach stage and the Holden Beach stage, and we were still operating off of a flatbed trailer back there. So, we've kind of, we've come up, but there's still some good things that we could do, like putting lights out there where the bands don't have to change in the dark, they have to wear little headlights on their head to be able to tear their equipment down, so.
Well, I think, Tim, what you're addressing from the, from the vision statement is the piece on providing the recreational opportunities, and how, of course, that translates into how our zoning provides for areas-
Special events.
-to do that, special events, and also, you know, our whole park system and everything else, so.
And I've got more ideas on that-
I'm doing a good job of that.
-that I've actually talked with Bill about a little bit, but yeah, there's some really good things that could be done back there, really good things. So that you got, so that the town doesn't get hit with where there are resurfaced pickleball courts, or completely redo what we've got. There's a good direction to go with some of these things, but I think the town's taken notice of what the community needs, and making some good steps towards.
Good.
Thank you, Tim. Bob?
I guess I'm reading it literally with regarding growth and development, what things are going well. I don't say, I wouldn't say a lot, but in terms, in trying to stick to the positives, I would say that the things we do for visitors, like the town, I think, in terms of managing a town, the small-town things like the parades, and the, and the social events, and then the splash pad, and, you know, redoing Middleton Park, the different components, I think we do a lot of good things in this town. I don't know if I call that growth and development. Definitely, we've made some inroads on the trees, protection of the trees, but I think that, how well that's going is limited. I think we could do a lot more and a lot better on that, so I think I'll have more comments for the, what are the things that are not going well.
I've got some others, too.
Thank you. Tim concurs.
Fair enough. Natasha?
I've been a resident here since 1976, so when you ask me about what's going well regarding growth and development, that's kind of a hard question for me to answer. For the most part, I'll say, us residents, we've kind of been bogged down with a lot of negative comments regarding the sewer charges and things that we've incurred with that, growing pains, if you will. What I look forward to, and what I feel is happening, is that we are trying to move positive, move forward in a positive manner. I think we have people in place on our planning board, our town council, that really care, their hearts in it, and I appreciate that. I'm happy with some of the improvements we've made on the tree ordinance. I think we can do better. I'm also happy with some of the stormwater, new stormwater rules that we have in place, and the new gentleman that we've hired, specifically getting rid of the peanuts, because that was just horrible, what was happening. I know some huge things are coming up with town council that we voted on as far as size, and, you know, that's been a big problem-
Home size.
-through the years, the home size. So, looking forward to seeing their comments on that. Mostly, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha.
Lee?
Yeah. I think I'd like to take one step back, but it's something that I think is good, as far as the rapid development is concerned. Just about everybody on this board refers back to our comprehensive plan, and tries to work within the rules we set in the comprehensive plan, or the wish list, anyway. And I did notice that your mission statement does not mention the comprehensive plan. Now, you did tie it in to an extent.
But that's, it is in the plan.
Yeah. That's the mission statement of the plan?
Vision statement.
Okay. But anyway, so that's one thing that's good. Certainly, paved streets are better than sand streets, and we've gotten paved streets. But the flip side of that is, as far as stormwater is concerned, we're building an awful lot of impervious surface, and there are alternatives in development to putting in all those impervious surfaces. And the other thing we certainly need, we've got the start of bike trails and stuff, that we have a nice wide sidewalk along Oak Island Drive, which has been a great addition since I've owned property here. So, on the good side, I think on the development side, we, the public development side, we've made some really good progress.
Thank you, Lee. Anita?
So, I agree with the committee that I think we have a strong sense of community. I do feel that we are, as Natasha says, feeling growing pains, and we have supported the airport growth, which is important to us. I also like that we have worked to limit house size, to try to develop, yet do that responsibly. I think we have some work there to do, and also, the tree ordinance and the illuminated sign, things that we've helped change, I think would be the positive.
Thanks, Lisa. Michael?
The good, I definitely think we've done a lot of good work with the trees. You can always do more.
Yeah.
But I think we've done well, and the airport, which I had not thought about until you brought it up, I think, done well with that. That's good stuff.
That's it, okay. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think, for myself, I sense the board as well thinks that we're in a, we're at a point where what we do, this go-around, is going to make or break the future of the town, and what we end up with, that we haven't gone so far away from, one of the best ways I know it, we have, we're a community that happens to have a beach. We're not a beach resort, because as you talked about, and is in our mission, people actually live and work here. It's not just a vacation destination, although that's a significant part of it. So many people have expressed to me in recent years that they are very concerned that we're getting ready to flip that, and we don't want to. To the extent that what we do in this process, and the recommendations that we make for maintaining that small-town character and scale, I think is the big-picture issue, and all of these, preserving the trees, dealing with the stormwater, providing the recreational opportunity, all of that is a part of that, and how we do that is- is a part of that, and how we do that is going to very much determine, uh, whether this is going to be the kind of place five, 10, 15 years from now that any of us would want to live in.
And, and I'll just, and anything else before we jump into the bad?
But what the, but the, the, the good thing is, is that we still have that opportunity. Okay? Uh, and, and one of the things that, you know, sometimes we're prone in this town to start going a certain course and then flip, change direction and not maintain. Although we may be making baby steps, I think, as we talked about, starting, starting somewhere. I think we have done some things that we have maintained that speak to achieving that vision. And one that I certainly wanted to, to bring up is the, uh, you know, we Lisa and I are trying to remember the exact year, uh, before the meeting. Several years ago, uh, multifamily development was hot on the island. People didn't see that as a continued direction we wanted to go, wanting to keep that single family residential character, and so we stopped it. We got what we got, and we're not getting any more, and that has continued to be supported, um, by councils and planning boards since then, although there have been in the last couple of years, some proposals to try and put that back somewhere. Uh, but that has, that has not been supported by the planning board or by the council. Uh, and so that's something in terms of growth and development, I think we did well and are continuing to do that well in that we are continuing to maintain it.
Thank you. Thank you all. And, and I'll just say, you know, I do think it's sometimes hard to, to, um, to think about this way, about growth and development in this way, but I would just say that you all should, to the, the degree you can, remember that you're in a place that is at least experiencing growth, because I'm going to take growth all day long over no growth. We have, we have communities in North Carolina that they, they would kill to have the amount of development pressure that you're having, or any pressure for that matter, so I know it's hard to think that way, and I know that our electeds here also, it's sometimes hard to think about it in those terms, but just always remember that, that you at least, uh, are fortunate enough to live in a place that folks do want to come to, even though it may be frustrating. Um, you know, we have places in, in our state that nobody wants to come to, and those folks are really in quite a quandary, uh, about what to do, uh, for their future. Your future, you're trying to just manage it. And, and you're not going to, to wither on a vine. So, that being said, let's, we'll go to the easy one now. Where can there be improvements, things that you feel like, um, you know, are not going well, et cetera? Ms. Madam Chair, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Wes. Okay, so I'm going to switch directions. This time I'm going to start on this end and come around the other way. Michael?
I'll pass on this right this second.
Well, opportunities for improvement. Um, I realize that we have to grow, we have to allow development, but I think one of our big opportunities is to ensure we have the infrastructure in place to support the growth. I don't know that that is really happening. I also feel like we have a huge opportunity, you know, our, uh, our, our mission or goal is, um, the multimodal transportation. I think we have a long way to go to really meet that, and I realize that some of that is out of our control, to a certain extent because of DOT roads, but some crosswalks would be so welcome because they are so needed at key points, um, on our main drives and near the beach, um, and golf cart, uh, traffic. I know, I appreciate the signs that the city has put up about making sure that people are strapped in and those, I see everyday babies that are not strapped in, and it just hurts my heart, but, um, anyway, so I think we have a long way to go in those opportunities, and there's always more to be done, um, to help, uh, develop, yet regulate it enough that it's not so fast that we can't, uh, keep up with the pace.
Lee?
Well, you see, you can read the paper.
Mr. President, can you sit closer to, thank you?
You can read the paper, uh, any week and pretty much lays out what our issues are. Trees, impervious surface, um, but I these, these, these are problems, and some of them have solutions coming down the road, but some of them don't, and I, I think that, uh, that, that's the negative, it's the negative of the growth. The growth is good, you, you, you either grow or you die, but on the other side of it, if you don't grow, well, if you don't grow, you die. If you grow, you don't die, so. That's it.
Natasha?
I think that, um, there are a lot of things we can do, and, and we're working to try to do it. I think that we are constantly kind of catering to the people who are coming here. You know, what can we do for, uh, the tourists and, uh, development and things like that? Meanwhile, we have our community members who are constantly paying taxes, paying taxes, um, bogged down with, as I said, the sewer stuff, which that has kind of been suppressed, thank goodness. But I think what we need to do is, uh, focus on perhaps some amenities, something for our residents to look forward to, maybe a recreation center. Uh, what we have has been there for so many years, and I think we can all agree that we've outgrown it. Some people mentioned to me, uh, Natasha, do, do you guys have a community pool? And, uh, well, I said, well, we kind of do, the ocean's out there, but, you know, maybe it would be nice if we could have something like that for our residents to look forward to. And, uh, I would, I would just like to move forward in a positive way, not focus so much on the things that have been bogging us down for so many years, and, uh, I, I think we need to give the residents something exciting to look forward to. That's what I think.
Well, I made a list here that I would probably go on for 20 minutes, but, but what I'll do is, is go quickly, so. I mentioned a couple of months ago that one of our challenges as a town is to balance the different stakeholders, and it's, um, you know, it's coming like ever, ever more evident every day. You mentioned good growth. It's good to have growth, but I think there's good growth and there's, there's bad growth, and so growth obviously is good, but when you're displacing families that thought they could live here, or, and you have people who, maybe retirees and other families that bought a home here to live, and now they have, uh, an entertainment center that houses 30 residents, I'm calling, talking about a mega home, that has 30, 30 people living in it and seven cars, and that's Saturday to Saturday, and then it starts again Saturday to Saturday with a whole nother group of seven cars and 30 residents. So you have people who, families and retirees that want to live here and make Oak Island their home, and then you have people that want to develop and, and, um, invest and basically run a business here. And that's a natural conflict, uh, that has to get balanced and managed. Um, and within that, I, I like to bring up the term capacity, so, you know, we only have so many parking spaces. Our roads are only so big. Uh, where would you put a sidewalk even if you wanted to? So, we have, so we've got infrastructure that needs to be balanced, um, with capacity parking, uh, and like I said, I'll go quick, so. One of the things I, I think that needs to be improved is, is so that we can stop saying that we're a victim of our own UDO and we're a victim of our own zoning. We've had walls put up in the West End, we've got towers on Lucas Cove, we've got mega houses and mini hotels that people say all the time, whoa, the UDO needs to be fixed, the UDO needs to be fixed. Uh, so I think, uh, that, that needs to be addressed. I'd, I'd suggest that we look at the airport. You know, coming from Boston, the airport is a constant challenge. People are complaining about noise and so forth. Same thing with parking. So these things are going to become an issue. When is enough, uh, uh, flights in and out of, out of the airport enough before people are complaining on it? I know people are on the flight path and they hear the noise on, uh, Sunday afternoon and, and, um, Thursday nights, the planes, the planes are coming in. It's kind of like, when is enough? Then you get into density and again, capacity. Williamson, Williamson Track will triple the size of Oak Island, so instead of having just 8,000 people living here, we're going to have another 17,000 people living over there, so we'll go to 25,000 people when Williamson Track comes out. Pine Forest is another sizable growth, uh, thing. Enforcement. I think we need to, uh, consider the enforcement requirement. I've seen a few, uh, comments in Facebook just recently about, oh, you don't need to regulate the size of mega houses, just enforce these 27 different twists to the current ordinance, and you won't have an issue with, you know, like, make sure the parking, make sure they're not parking on the, on the setback or such and such. But we don't have the team of people to do enforcement, and then you'll hear, the next week, they'll complain about enforcement. So I think enforcement of all these rules, if we get these to be too technical and too confusing and too restrictive, we won't be able to, um, actually enforce them. My last comment, because I said I'd go quickly, would be the central business district, you know? Uh, Oak Island Drive and 58th, uh, Street is kind of our Broadway and Main, and that area could be, could be reworked, and, and I, I, I know that, again, I'm from out of state, so what we have is sort of a cooperative, uh, cooperative development where you work with the, the planning department works with the owners of the property to re, rebuild, and and there are discussions that can be held to maybe rezone, allow different densities, in order to encourage, in order to encourage the right kind of development that you want. Uh, there's a huge plot of land right at Broadway and Main that, that, um, could be worked and could be worked properly. And then, um, where I think the, I, I'll close on this comment. Sometimes you see comments in Facebook and, and other places that there are people who came to this town because they liked it. Okay, outsiders like myself. You come to Oak Island because you like it, and then you want to change it to be like what you're, where you came from. I think that that's a little bit wrong. I'm sure there are some of those people, but there are a lot of people who came here because of what it's like, what Oak Island is like, the small town feel, the mom and pop businesses. They came here and they actually want to keep it that way. And so the growth that we're having, I think is over, over, overgrowth. It's, it's, uh, too, too much growth, and, um, that needs to get managed. And, uh, the last comment is, every, everybody that has ever run for council says they want to do managed growth. And, um, I don't know how that gets translated into action. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You took those words right out of my mouth. Thank you, Bob.
Say amen.
Thanks, brother. Um, Tim?
Try to be like Bob and keep it brief.
That's why I like you, Tim.
Sometimes it's like, other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the play?
You shouldn't have asked the question.
I, I agree with Tanya, uh, um, I mean, with Natasha, I'm sorry. With Natasha, what's her name?
Two three before ten.
There, we, we do a lot of things for people, it's kind of like a reactive, you know, what, what is it that you would like for us to do to make you happy when they didn't, there were no promises made, they just came down here and enjoyed what we have. And I know the pool was a big thing, um, back when some of the council members were running back from Sheila and and Charlie and them back during, because I was kind of up close and personal with that back then, and they were wanting public transportation to and from the beach, they were wanting a big community pool, and, and that's a good thing, but then they complain about taxes, and you got to pay for this stuff somehow. And, um, so I can see that there's a, there's a balance, you know, we, we've got a lot of things that people don't get at other beaches, just like we are very dog friendly. That is huge, and we're in real estate, so we actually represent the town to people initially that are coming down here wanting to check the place out, and you take them to the Baptist Assembly Grounds, you take them all the way to the West End, they see how long this island is, and, um, everybody, for the most part, still waves when you pass somebody on the street. That's huge to people. So you got people that are happy to be here because everybody is so friendly. And, um, I don't, the, the growth and development, I think it goes beyond, how am I going to get into this one? It goes beyond the physical things that we provide to people, like the activities in the park, like the, the sports complex that we are slowly developing here, which I am a huge user of. Um, and I see the attraction that it has, people from Winding River, people from St. James, people from Southport come over here, and they use our facilities, and it's a negative thing when it's presented in one way, but it's a positive thing because they come over here and they eventually will sail and move over here to Oak Island because they like the fact that it's so friendly, and you don't have an HOA that tells you, you can't park a pickup truck in the driveway, when, you know, some pickup trucks hundred thousand dollars or better. So, um, the way they're treated when they get here, I just, how, how am I going to? I, I'm going with the glass in front of the people downstairs when you come to pay your water bill, and the reason that glass is there? It wasn't COVID, that glass was there long before COVID ever came, because somebody from, I don't understand, got spit on by somebody from the public. And then you got people that represent the town to the community that are almost reactive when somebody walks up to the window, and it's like a defensive thing. The, the, um, the morale and everything of the town employees is something that is huge with the community. When they come in, whoever they deal with from the town, that sets, and with the fire department, we were the the reason we got this new fire station down here to be as nice as it was, is that was going to be the first impression when that new bridge finally got here, that was supposed to be here, what, in like the early eighties? And then we had butterflies, Francis said that there were butterflies that were endangered, so we couldn't.
Well, actually, actually, it was, it was supposed to be built when the first one got, when the drawbridge got knocked down.
Yeah.
They had the money and everything ready back in the seventies, and then they just stopped that, and, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, our development is driven a lot by how people feel the first time they set foot on this island. And we get to see that firsthand, and we get to see people that have never been here realize what we've got to offer. With the, the splash pad was huge. Whoever it was that put that splash pad in, that was an awesome thing. Because that's a, that is an active, you can sit there and you can watch the kids and everybody playing when that bucket dumps home and everything, and this is something that the town is providing. And thank goodness, to my knowledge, there's no charge, everybody just goes and enjoys it, just like they do the concerts. So, I, I think focus needs to be placed also on the people that work for the town, that represent, and there are things that they probably need, I don't know if they're not getting hurt, I, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just completely speculating now, but there are good people that work in this building. There are really good people that work for the town. Which I guess when you love your job, then you come up with the great ideas that work, like, hey, guys, how much are we spending on paving these streets and stuff? Why don't we get our, and it, it, it goes, it goes a long way. And I'll leave that right there. The, um, Yacht Drive, was there ever a plan to put side, wasn't there a plan to put sidewalks on Yacht Drive at one point?
There was a proposal to, not for sidewalk, now sidewalk's been talked about. There was a proposal, actually, there was a grant application, uh, it was kind of like doing the, the bike paths along yacht like we did on Beach Drive. That I think was actually one of those DOT grants, uh, for like the first, I don't know, mile or two, you know, because we did that in sections, remember? From Middleton going east, uh, major section of that, and I think we had actually gotten the grant and the council rejected it.
With my point, reason for asking.
So that kind of killed doing anything out there.
Yacht Drive is where everybody kind of defaults to, golf carts, bicycles, because it's, it used to be, it was pretty safe.
Yep.
But now, and even at nighttime, when you've got But now, and even at nighttime, when you've got traffic lights and stuff, I mean, not traffic lights, but lights from the traffic, from golf carts and cars and people. It's hard to see sometimes. And you've also got people walking their dogs on the side of the road in dark clothes. And to do, I don't know how feasible it would be to do like a bike path on one side and a sidewalk on the other side, but if you.
And, you know, in terms of the growth and development kind of things, that would, you know, if there's something that could lean into, okay, so this is how we'll, I don't know what it is in our code that would make that better or worse. You know, some properties and how it was originally subided. Now that it's built out, some of those things that you might have done up front.
Can't do anymore.
Really aren't available to us now. How you divide, you know, whether you enter from the side of the street or you're coming off yacht drive, the ditches that we depend on for drainage and stormwater. But do you want people on a sidewalk or a bike path doing the north side? Because you got the accesses every so often versus doing, it's kind of like we have on, you know, Oak Island Drive. So you're not crossing some main thoroughfare and getting in with the traffic that way. So there's some things, I don't know what the, if there's some traffic patterns, types of issues that dovetail into.
Some, but mainly that's a more of a big, that's a town-led initiative type item that wouldn't necessarily unfortunately be addressed in the UDO. Now, you can address sidewalks, multi-use paths, et cetera, for new subdivisions or new commercial development. But, you know, if it's already there, it's generally going to come out of the pocketbook of the town to put it in place or to engineer it. It's just generally.
As many people, as much traffic as there is, foot traffic, bike traffic, golf cart traffic. I mean, you've got regular motor vehicles, golf carts, bicycles, ladies with their kids in their little thing behind their bicycles. And eventually, you know, eventually somebody's going to get hurt. You know, eventually something's going to happen to where it's going to be forced in front of the council. What are you guys going to do about this? We just lost some, you know, whatever.
And so while those things aren't part of the UDO, they are a town initiative. And that's part of that infrastructure that the town needs to take care of so we can accommodate the growth and the people that are here.
Yeah, and the, whatever the mission statement said about the multimodal transportation, you know, how does that? And those items that are in the land use plan, how, and it talks about all of that, all of that in general terms at least. And we can certainly sit here all afternoon and do specifics. But where in the UDO, what do you put in the UDO to support that? Or improve and change it? And so that'll be the question going through this, yeah.
The reason I wanted to hear, you know, for a year now, there's three things I've been harping on and everybody brought them up. I was glad to hear that. One was the golf carts. Out here on Oak Island Drive, you know, that's dangerous. And then the parking, I think Bob brought that up. Those mega houses sleep 40 people. That's not residential. And as far as the airport goes, I went to the meeting and the airport says that they're going to get larger, they're going to get more flights, the planes are going to get larger. They said that we won't need more runway because planes are getting more efficient. They can take off and land better.
Yeah, and we're not into the control tower part yet. That I think from some of our discussion.
Well, I don't, yeah, it won't be commercial.
Yes, it won't be commercial.
They're not going to do commercial. They're going to keep it private.
That's enough.
But I'm glad to hear that everybody feels, and these are things I've been harping on, you know, since last year. So I guess we've got a work cut out for it.
That was all I had, except one recommendation to the council member that is sitting in here. On your committees for your recreational facilities, pull some people in that use them all the time to give y'all some good feedback on it. And that way, y'all won't have so many fires to put out, I don't think.
Thank you all. I think one of the, we've kind of covered both sides of most of the major issues, coming at it, going well in terms of beginning to go in a direction that we think is good, but then continue that with the improvements. One of the things I haven't heard specifically, although I just mentioned parking. And in our, you know, I think it was, if it wasn't number one, it was certainly, certainly in the top three in the surveys for the land use plan that we're operating off of now, was the appearance and functioning of the commercial district. And we have, well, the fact that there was even a framework for facade ordinance in the UDO, we'd never had anything on that before. We've done some work on it. Probably need to do some more at some point. But that commercial district will redevelop. And I don't know that we have the things in place either in terms of uses or parking and how we're going to work with that and the brightway, the alleyway, all of that. I think there are a lot of things that the UDO, yeah, there will be either private investment or community investment or both partnerships would be the ideal. But I don't, I'm sure that we need to make improvements in the framework that we provide for the development and redevelopment of our commercial areas on the island.
Great. All right. Good?
Everybody good?
Fantastic. That's exactly what I was sort of hoping. That, the reason why this conversation is important for me and also Matt is so that towards the tail end of this, when things get prioritized, it helps us understand what's important to you guys. Okay. You guys probably had some general comments in there, so I don't, I don't, I don't know if we need to go, I don't know if there's any, Madam Chair, I don't know if there's any additional general comments before we move on.
Yeah, anybody have anything else you want to throw in there before we keep going? Okay.
We're good, Matt, thank you. Or, yeah, Wes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, so that's really it for today. I mean, this is really just kickoff introduction. I'll deliver, I'll give you all your homework, if you will. But, you know, at this point, I'll open the, I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair, for any questions that you guys have for me in any form or fashion before we close this meeting out. Any questions?
Yeah, anybody have any other questions for Wes? Okay.
So I'll just, I know Lisa's on the microphone. So you'll see this has, we've got the general code, the applicable general code items. We also provide, you know, a potential new organization structure for the UDO. And then certainly recommendations for articles one through six. Remember, these are recommendations. This is not, Wes, you need to change this more or what have you. I'm just here to offer potential recommendations or considerations. They are not set in stone. And certainly, you all are the policy board here and the advisory board. So if those recommendations are at odds with what you believe is important, then when we meet next, please tell me so. So I hope that makes sense in all of this. So please, at your discretion, review this. Does everyone also have a copy of the UDO? I guess would be important to mention.
We don't have a printed copy of the latest updates and with all the 160D stuff and what have you. But I think we all know how to access it on UniCode online.
Okay. We may have to figure out about, I guess you will have to sort out if you feel like it would be important for you to have a hard copy when we review this.
I can tell you right now, straight up front, I need a hard copy.
Yep. And that's why we're doing this also in hard copy. Because in my experience, it's easier for you all to review this in a hard copy.
Making notes, everything else, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. We can talk with Lisa about how we go about trying to get you all some binders so we're all working on the same sheet of music for this. So, okay, yes, sir.
I have a quick question. So what you gave us is sort of a first draft. I mean, it's obviously not complete and it's just, is that what it is? It's a first draft and you want us to look at what you're recommending already?
It is the first phase of this. By the end of this, you'll have an audit for the entirety of the UDO. So it has draft on there because it is a draft. And, I mean, in that sense, it is some, to some degree, a final document. But it hasn't been reviewed by you all yet. The key is to go through where we've identified things and also for you all to review the UDO. So you're familiar with it and so you understand the things that maybe are problematic. You know, that Matt has to deal with or policy things that you don't think are correct. So this sort of provides a framework for that.
My, you know, I've sort of done similar things, nothing to do with zoning. But how do you want input from us?
We'll go, we'll go section by section. So we'll start the meeting with talking about next meeting, talking about, you know, the potential UDO reorganization. And then we'll start on the general code audit summary and go right down where you guys have questions.
Verbally.
Yes, sir. That's why I mentioned that this is your homework. Between now and next meeting, to the degree that you want, and I would hope that you will, review what's been given to you and cross-reference some of your UDO document, as I said, to get a sense of things. Does that, does that make sense? And Madam Chair, does that make sense?
It does to me, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know what others would like. And maybe I'm the only one, but what I would have liked to receive, or maybe I still can, is an electronic version of this and I can put my notes in a separate column.
So, and I appreciate the comment. For this, we like to keep, maintain things hard copy to what degree we can. That helps with versioning control. And.
I understand that part.
I trust that these things aren't going to be sent out to the hinterland, but someone could receive this document and not understand the context. You guys understand the context. We're going to work on hard copies. When the whole thing's finalized, absolutely send it out to whoever. But, and that's not to say we're going to go through here and modify this thing. This is just recommendations. It is not binding. Someone may get ahold of this document and think, oh, my gosh, they're going to go do XYZ. No, we're just talking here about auditing this document, figuring out what's problematic in the UDO. So it sets the stage for any changes that potentially get made.
So Wes, so we come back our next meeting and we've reviewed this. We've looked at the language in the UDO. We've looked at your recommendation. And so there's opportunity at that point to either say thumbs up or thumbs down on what the recommendations are. And if something, if as we're going through the UDO and following along what you have, the sections that you have recommendations for, if we say, hey, you missed this buddy, then we put that to you. So that's how this is going to work, correct? And we're just going to go block by block, line by line, through this audit. And yes, no. And it's similar to what we did with the 160D amendments because we had, Jake had split it up into what was 12 different sections. We got section, section, section. Here's what we have, here's what needs to be changed, here's why. And so we just hashed that out piece by piece. Most of it was pretty straightforward. But the things that, where we had some, a lot of concerns and issues about, well, you know, there were certain key things that we just focused in on and spent the most time on that. And I see this as being the same process.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that fair?
That's very correct. A lot of these maybe are housekeeping items that, yeah, that's fine, that makes sense. But then we may get to some section about certain uses that are permitted somewhere or the question about how accessory structures are located. That may engender more conversation about exactly how that should transpire. And so when we work with other communities, the boards have copious notes taken on this document typically, or they have their own notes, or they make notes in their UDO to document. And as the chair mentioned, there may be things that you noticed that I didn't notice or things that you disagree with that are pointed out. And that's, this is discussion, again, about things that, to help build consensus on for making those changes or those priority items that need to be addressed first. And then from there, we'll just see how things are handled. But Madam Chair, you summed it up exactly correct.
Now, let me ask you one other sort of, trying to prepare to do what we need to do on this. To me, yeah, all the procedural stuff is all nice for England and makes it a little bit difficult. But I notice we've got the table of uses as part of what we will be reviewing in this first round, which is a big deal. And so, and there may be in here, I'm just kind of, I'm just asking if it's here and saying some things we might be looking at as we're going to it. You know, certainly definitions, and we don't have a separate thing here for definition. I get, we'll get to the definitions at the end of this.
The definitions will be at the end. I do believe there's several comments in there about you need a definition for XYZ because there's not a definition and so.
There's some things in there to me that there's the definition. And the other, my other heartburn issue on the table of uses is there are, now certainly when the RMU, CMU went away, that eliminated a lot of that. But there are an awful lot of, may not be as many now, but there still seem to be a significant number of special uses that don't have any standards to, no kind of condition. Okay, so it's a special, well, if it's a special use, then why should it be in? If you can tell me why, then you need at least this much. And so there's, why?
Yep.
There's nothing to go on in terms of, except something very general and generic. You're not pointing out why this should be a special use and what kind of things you need to be looking for to make it work in this area. So you've got this list of special uses with not a clue to go on as to why it should be special or not. Maybe it needs to be permitted. And if it's going to be special, then it needs to be special with supplemental standards.
And I think that's a.
Is my, and I get that too from, I think, all the conditional uses, as we called it back in the day. Everything had something in terms of identifying the key considerations for why this wasn't a permitted use.
Right. Yes, there are, I noticed that. And you've now given me a little bit more background on this. I didn't necessarily point, you know, point that out. But that's a point for discussion that we'll have. And some communities have moved for certain uses or conditional zoning approval. These are things that we will all discuss about this process. I'll just say this and, you know, then we can, because we're really talking about content here. But historically or over the past, you know, couple decades, folks would just tag something with a special use because. tag something with a special use because they, they felt like that was a more difficult process, and they could put a stop to something. That's not really the reality with special use. So, and, and this is something, obviously, I'll talk with Matt about too, but, because we don't want to load the town up with, or you guys, with 10 conditional zoning permits, you know, a meeting, but anyhow.
Well, and the, and the special uses, whether they've got supplemental standards or not, you know, don't come to us, they get a council because.
They do.
The whole, and I want to keep it that way. But that seems to be putting an undue burden on council if that can be either permitted, permitted with standards, or if you're going to, if you really feel strongly that it needs to be a special use, then a lot of clarification on why that is and what they need to be looking for would certainly, I think, end up with a better development product.
Yes.
But I just wanted to kind of prelude the whole discussion next time with that, and just have you thinking about that.
Absolutely. And hopefully, we'll get to the, the use table section at our next, at our next meeting.
Yeah.
We'll just see.
We'll see, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about how we need to go about what is expected of us, what's our assignment for the next meeting? I guess the only other thing, Matt, would be how we're going to get hard copies of what's really up to date with our UDO, because we've made so many changes since, most of us have been on the board and got a copy.
Yep, I've got a note too. We'll figure it out.
Okay, all right. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you all very much for your time today.
Well, Wes, I do appreciate, it's good to, good to see you again. I think we all enjoyed working with you when you filled in some for us before, and glad that we're doing this, and I appreciate what you're, what you've done for us today in getting us started on this process and helping the thing.
Thank you.
Things very well laid out. And if there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second? Any of you? All in favor? Okay. Thank you all, and thank you for all your input today.
Thanks, Wes.